It's six o'clock. They call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the angry public for its suspensions, for the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right. First up is approval of the agenda.
I approve of the agenda for January twenty eighth to twenty twenty fifth. A second?
Got moved in second. Any additions, comments, questions? All those in favor of the agenda say yes. Most say no. Agenda's approved. Next up is the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Scotty? We've moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question in the payables. We have a new heater for public work. Five thousand dollars. Was that, did the old one quit or?
Yeah, basically we're not adding anything new, so I imagine it was a replacement. I can double check with Brian on that. Alyssa or Brooke? No. Replacement.
Okay. Did that meet, was that high efficiency?
Typically everything we put in is more efficient, more higher efficiency most up to date. I mean, I don't know the specs on the heater.
Okay, I'm just curious. Daniel, did you happen to see anything in it?
No, no. And that is one of the things that I would like to check in is where's we're at with the energy efficiency improvements for the different buildings. If we can get a sense of that at some point. Thanks.
That's the only thing I guess.
I have a couple of questions on the accounts payable. Page three of six. Tiffa, splash pad for a hundred and fifty-six dollars. What if we buy in January for the splash pad?
Page three of six?
Correct.
That'd probably be, yeah. If you have the finance department here and there, welcome to jump in at any time.
That was the last water bill for the, before it got shut off in October.
Yeah.
Okay. And page four of six for the marina. There's four things listed there. The third one just says City of Whitehall for a thousand sixty-four dollars and some change. Don't know what that's for. And then the last one, public utilities for the marina for fourteen hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
That's probably the same. That's probably the last quarter utility bill.
Last water bill, last electric. Got the, got the followers running certainly.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the consent agenda say yes. Most say no. Consent agenda is approved. Next up is messages from the mayor, city council, and city manager. I'd like to remind everyone to, I'm counsel, but please speak into your microphone so they can hear it in the back. First up, I wanna say that I attended the Playhouse fundraiser last Saturday. It was a well-attended event. All the majority of the local restaurants were there. Had great soup. It was a, I think they raised over four thousand dollars for the Playhouse. So, great activity. Happy to see a lot of the community come on. City manager?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right. Counselor. Steve?
Oh, yeah. I was wondering, at the last meeting, we talked about water bills getting written out. I still don't understand why water bills would not be billed and paid. I mean, that's almost like taking right out of taxpayers' pocket. You ask me, if somebody doesn't pay thirty thousand dollar water bill, you know, that would, what, I don't understand how that could be just written out.
It was due to an error on the city staff, both at the accounts payable and accounts receivable. It was nine months in arrears. It affected over five hundred customers. And looking at the financial condition of the Water and Sewer Fund, we felt I'd made the decision, and I've already told council, these decisions will come to you in the future for a review and approval, that because it was our error and it was over nine months in arrears, that we would eat the cost. It did not affect the financial stability of those two funds. As a side note, the largest payer that you mentioned had just paid a thirty-three thousand dollar late fee. And I believe in twenty twenty-three, they had paid over eighty thousand dollars in late fees. So, we collected more money than we actually billed based upon those late fees coming in. So, yeah, you could look at the loss, but we were still net positive.
But why, why is there late? Why do they pay their bills late?
It's just an internal accounting process that more often than not, they're paying their bills late.
Okay. But that's.
This is, this is Steve's point. This is Steve's turn. He'll have yours.
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's, that's all I had to say about that. It just seems kind of a bloody way for things operate. But I'm hoping we're, we're gonna hear something from this committee. I don't know if they've met yet for the Playhouse.
No, they're scheduled for February thirteenth for their first meeting.
And how many members are there on this committee?
Close to ten.
Close to ten?
It's ten or eleven.
I'm just wondering if that is kind of overkill, you know, when you're trying to, unless you need input from that many different people, it seems like it'd be awful hard to come to a consensus with ten different people. I want these, we got, obviously, you know, we, it seemed like a Department of Government efficiency could run with two people. Apparently that worked for the whole country. And so, why do we need ten for a Department of Playhouse efficiency? I, I'm, I'm just hoping that they really get things done in a hurry and get things figured out. And we need to find out why we're seventy thousand in arrears for one year. And that's, that just can't go on. So, I hope, I'm gonna wish it luck and hopefully they can figure things out and make it work for the taxpayer to win. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you. Scott?
Well, I'm going my same kick because I always go on this time of year. Sidewalks in the city look like crap. They're all full of snow. Nobody enforces any of the, enforces the sidewalk, shoveling wood. You know, I just, I just don't understand it. But I bring it up over here and it's just like hitting my head against the wall, I guess, you know. The school districts, you know, claims, claims to be wanting to be safe for the, you know, wanting safety for the kids and everything else, but they don't even do their own sidewalks. So, I, you know, I think it's time to where somebody needs to be made an example of and you start enforcing, you know, the rules that we have on the books. It's just, you know, it's just, I mean, the whole Cold Street corridor almost is covered in snow. And there's a lot of people in this city that, that the only way they can get over to Dollar General or up the shelf to get their little bit of groceries they need or whatever, they have to walk. They don't have cars. I don't know if the city snow blower is down again or not, and it doesn't make any difference because, you know, the ordinance states that it's, you know, the property owner's responsibility to remove it. So, I just think we need to start enforcing it. That's all I have.
Jeff?
Nothing tonight?
Tom?
Yeah, last year, the council agreed that on the bike path by the trestle, that the gates would be closed to snowmobiles and that the sidewalk there down Lake Street would be plowed. Hasn't happened. And I'd like to know why that is.
I will confirm with the public works director in the morning on that.
That's all I can.
Yep.
I, on a more positive, happy note, I was reappointed this past week by the county commissioners in a unanimous vote to sit on the accommodations tax advisory committee for the county. So, that's a, that's a good positive. It's a great interaction with the, with the county commissioners and the group of folks that are on the board. So, it's great. I appreciate the vote of confidence from the county commissioners.
Okay, just, just three things tonight. One, the Playhouse committee is the thirteenth. Is that a six o'clock?
No, it'll be at four o'clock at the Playhouse.
At the Playhouse.
I'll get that posted officially.
It is a public meeting.
Okay. Is it possible for you to add city council members to the notification list? I actually have two people who want to participate. One who's very involved in the arts and someone else who's a huge, who was a huge national marketing specialist for four different huge companies. He's like, yeah, I'll come and help out. So, he wants to come to, wants to come to the meetings as well. So, that's four at the Playhouse. Okay, that's great. The next council meeting, we're, we're gonna put forward the recommendations from the senior advisory committee. But ideally, we don't discuss them then. I'll make in depth. But then we, at the work session, we should kind of hash it out. Has it been, I think we got some good ideas, but we need to, I think it'd be helpful to present it. And I'm trying to get the three entities to come and say, this is who we are and this is what we're thinking. And then, then we can talk about it the next work, work session. That's some good things. And then the last thing is I took two of my grandsons to the sledding field on Sunday. It was an amazing day for sledding. Lot, lot of people there. They, they loved it. Couple of things, a couple of. Couple of things, um, a couple of mothers mentioned to me that wouldn't it be possible for us to get some hay bales around some of the, like, the poles along the side of the stairs? Um, in case, you know, somebody runs into that, they're gonna get hurt. And then just take a look at it with the idea is, are there places we could put some more straw bales, you know, in, in the event? Because the kids go down really fast. Um, but it, but it was fun to see. That's all.
Did you go over the jump?
Me? I have in the past, and I am not ruling it out.
All right, next up is public comment. For those wishing to make a public comment, you step up, give your name, and limit to three minutes, please.
All right, my name is Eric Harsh. Uh, I own a home at 1511 Moody Street. And I'm here responding to, um, a couple of letters that I've gotten from our city manager, from you guys. This is a packet that has some information out that I'm gonna talk about today. There you go. I love that. That's after roaming the car. All right. So I got a letter from Scott. Actually, I got two. I got one in November from Scott, from direction of the city council, wondering when my home's gonna be repaired. It's been seven months. I understand that. It sucks for me too, so I'm, I'm sorry. I talked to Scott in the hallway. I thought that was done, and then over the holidays, I didn't go to my P.O. box very often. And I got this on the 15th of January, December 23rd, it was dated. I had 15 days to respond, but I figured I'd just come in here and talk to you about it. Um, what you'll see there is the whole breakout of the estimate that we've been working on for seven months. We started out $120,000 off with my insurance company. Brad Van Bergen has it down to 22 now. We're not starting it until I have a confirmation that they are going to actually do. What I hired them to do is that's replacement, replacement insurance. So I'm, I apologize that it's, uh, unfortunate for my neighbors that they see animals going in and out of my house and find that it's unsightly. I'm doing everything I can within the insurance company to get that. I've lived in four different homes since, in seven months. I'm settled now. I'm, I'm settled in a place where I can be in until the house is built. My desire would certainly have never had this happen, but natural disaster. I don't know. We can't, we can't figure that out. You'll see a picture in there. Um, but thank goodness I wasn't home. Because you guys, well, it would have been fortunate for you because you would have gotten after it was after relief. Because the tree that landed on my house landed on my pillow. I happened to not be home that night. So with all of those things and the emotions that come in, getting these letters from my city council, it's extremely disappointing that there's maybe somewhere along the line a lack of humanity. I'm working everything I can, and if, if there's a, there's a concern, I would love for you to be part of it. Come help me figure out how to get the house built cheaper. I bought a house in 2020 for $105,000 and I can't build it for four. That's three different builders and, you know, I mean, Brad's the one I wanna do and, and it's just the way it is. So working with that, with the insurance company, when I hired personal replacement house insurance, with all the bells and whistles, I thought it was pretty well set. And their number started out at 267. Brad's first number was just under four. We, we've come a long way in seven months. I've had 80 hours logged of time that I've spent on my own, taking care of insurance stuff, running around, taking pictures, meeting. I've had five appraisers there, five different estimators for the insurance company that we're trying to hone this through. And I kind of wanted to give you guys an update on that. I, and, and if ever there's a question, please call me. I mean, I'm pretty available and, and people know, I see most all of you out and about almost every week. I have been told by Osborne Excavating that January, he took time to rebuild his shop, which I understand because you gotta take that in time out, but he's starting in February. He's gonna be tearing the house down. So we're hoping with this $22,000, the difference between the insurance and Brad's cost, that we can come and, and get started. So I hope that I don't receive any, oh, it's almost threatening, but it's not. I know you, Scott's doing his job and you guys are doing your jobs, and somebody complains. But you'll, you'll see on the end that the three pictures are of Marsha Murphy's house across the street. She was told by the Department of Public Works or someone, Brad Murphy was told, that if you put up a snow fence around the house with T-rail posts and some no trespassing signs, that would suffice the safety and well-being of all the public. I think the animals can go over the fence and I don't, I think any kid's gonna run right through that fence if he wants to get in the house. Gee, gee. So I mean, let's, let's be sensible on what our requests are and what the outcome is. Yes, I want my house rebuilt. And yes, I want some humanity from my fellow citizens, the people that I care about. This is a town I love, but I'm getting told I have to do a silly thing about putting up a fit, a, a snow fence to keep out a squirrel. So I hope that if you have any questions in the future, you know, I, I give anybody my phone number and call me directly. I would appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So I have a quick question. Scott has time to send a letter and bother this...
Your name, please?
Christina, to bother this guy about a house that happened during a natural event in Whitehall, but yet can't be bothered to shovel the city path, because me and my daughter tried to walk through it a couple of weeks ago and we couldn't get through, and can't go after the school for ordinances, but has time to go after this gentleman that it happened during a natural event. Very confused.
Hello, I'm Norm Kittleson, resident of Whitehall, and I'd like to share some comments about the Playhouse. I was fortunate enough to serve on the council when the Playhouse was going through its renovation. And I'm really proud the way the community came together to complete the project and leave us with such a beautiful, uh, world-class facility, and it really is a world-class facility. Investing in a Playhouse represents a commitment to enhancing our community's quality of life, fostering opportunities for local talent, attracting visitors, and stimulating economic growth through the multiplier effect. Here are some reasons why public funding for the Playhouse is not just beneficial, but it's also essential. Playhouse serves as a cultural hub, enriching the lives of residents by providing access to live performances, film screenings, and other artistic events. It fosters a sense of pride and belonging, offering a space where community members can come together to share meaningful experiences. The arts add needed flavor and value to our lives, and a vibrant cultural scene contributes to the more, to a more enjoyable and fulfilling daily life, making our town a more desirable place to live and work. The Playhouse offers invaluable opportunities for creative expression and personal growth. Local children can participate in drama workshops, musical performances, and educational programs, developing skills like public speaking, teamwork, and self-confidence. Adults too can engage in theater productions, concerts, and other events, either as performers or behind the scenes. These opportunities empower individuals, nurture local talent, and encourage lifelong learning and creativity. I'm friends with musicians who tour nationally, who have performed at the Playhouse, and they all say that it is one of the nicest venues they have played in and that the community is very fortunate to have such a wonderful performance space. The Playhouse is an attraction, drawing audiences from neighboring towns and out of, and out of town for performances, festivals, and special events. Visitors attending these events spend money at local businesses, such as restaurants, shops, and hotels, contributing to the overall economic health of the town. The theater becomes not just a cultural asset, but a driver of tourism and commerce. Every dollar invested in the theater results in several dollars of economic impact, helping local businesses and the community at large. In conclusion, the Playhouse is far more than a stage. It's a cornerstone of community identity, a catalyst for personal and professional development, and a driver of economic viability. The operating budget of the Playhouse is less than 4% of the annual city, uh, city budget. By investing in a Playhouse, we ensure that our town remains a vibrant, attractive, and thriving place for residents and visitors alike. Public spending on this initiative is not just a financial investment, it's an investment in the heart and soul of our community. I urge you to keep supporting the Playhouse. Arts organizations and for-profit venues are struggling and some are closing due to increased costs and lower ticket sales. It'd be a shame to lose such a valuable community asset like the Playhouse at Whitehall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here I am, Leonard, and I misquoted myself last evening. I understand that bond has been paid down some, so we don't owe $4 million on the Playhouse on the renovation. Just a little less than that, and we're still $80,000 in the hole, $76,000 with the $4,000 that you raised from the fundraiser. I still say that the city has no business owning the Playhouse. That should be a private enterprise, and I think you should sell it.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Horn, and I'm a resident of the city of Whitehall. I'd like to address the council about appointments to the planning commission. At the last meeting, I was thrilled to see that I was on the mayoral recommendations list for, uh, the planning commission. Since the last meeting, my name was removed from the recommendation list. I wanna be clear that I'm highly qualified and still interested in being appointed to serve on the planning commission. I included in my application to the city that I have coursework in planning for historic preservation and a work history in considering environmental impacts for land use. Additionally, you're all aware that I consistently attend council meetings as an engaged resident, sitting here in the audience, and, um, that my application form also details my lifelong experience in civic and community projects. I'm experienced, well-informed, a good listener, and dependable. I appreciate your consideration for appointment to planning commission and ask that you select me for one of the seats.
Greetings. My name is Ed Whalen. Six oh three, we're speaking in. When the city acquired the theater from Blue Lake, uh, the mayor was my predecessor, Mac, and his wife, and they were very much involved in the process, and I sort of slipped, stepped in with that at the time. We're not just a city government for the purpose of securing safety for the people, securing safety for the property. We have an obligation of very much controlling the future of their quality of life. We are not in a business. We are a government. We're not here to, it's, it's almost not lawful for us to attempt to make a profit. Many millions of dollars were in a very short period of time, astonishingly short, to acquire and rebuild and design the theater. We have the purpose of quality of life. This is done by the theater. It's done by the marina. It's done by the many parks we have. And I really do appreciate all that the city has done for us and for the community. Thank you.
For your comments? Anyone else?
I've attended, my name's Susan. I live over on Division Street. And I've attended a number of the council meetings, not all of them, but a number of them where the Playhouse has come into the subject. And although I can appreciate and respect those who are friends of the arts and who enjoy such things, their perspective, I do respect that. However, I personally am not one that has enjoyed any benefit from the Playhouse. If the Playhouse is so valuable to those who are involved in the arts, it should pay for itself. I have no problem with it being there. It's a beautiful building. I appreciate seeing the upgrades and all that. But as a taxpayer, I am not willing to spend money on something that I and many of my neighbors have no regard for. We don't use it. It's not important to us. Not that it's not important, it's, the city is here to take care of the business of the city. If the Playhouse can pay for itself, that's fine. Keep it. But I don't want my tax dollars going into something like that. That's not the city's for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? See none? We'll move on to other business. I don't think we have any more business. So we'll go with new business appointments. Did you all have a list? Anyone like to speak on that?
I have a question.
Daniel?
Are we going to be moving this as an entire slate, or are we going to go board by board, commission by commission?
It's my desire to move it as an entire slate. They are a very, mayoral appointments.
I have a question.
Yes.
I don't see lighting commission. I, I, I'm missing something somewhere.
Yeah, I submitted a corrected copy. I, you had two page threes in your, but I sent you a packet, but I put one on your desk. Uh-oh, by Brenda. I, I'll do it. Do you have any one? All right, go ahead.
Do we need a motion?
We only need a motion before we can...
Get a motion to go.
Sorry about that. I don't think I'm... Or whatever that was.
We need a motion. Put it on the table. Hearing no motion. Not hearing enough of a motion, so we'll move on. The next portion is walk the beat request.
I'll make a motion to bring to the floor the walk the beat request.
We'll move in second. Let's have a discussion. Scott, you brought it up. You seconded it, correct?
I seconded, yes.
Okay. I, I support, okay. Daniel, you support it? Is there any discussion on this? All right. All those in favor of the walk the beat request, say yes. Opposed, say no. Walk the beat request is approved. Next up is Resolution 2505, Budget Amendment Number Two. I'll move, uh, Resolution 2505, Budget Number, Budget Amendment Number Two for 2425.
I'll second it.
Daniel moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
As normally, don't understand a whole lot of, uh, how the counting works, I guess. I add up all the positives and all the negatives here and it's $577 and, uh, amendment to the budget. I guess I thought we had a budget for a reason, so, uh, the way my house budget works, you got so much money in it and you live within your budget. So I, I think the city needs to live within its budget and, uh, if, if unexpected things come up, then it's gotta come from somewhere else. Some, someplace else in the budget has gotta suffer. We can't just keep taking, you know, half a million dollars here and half a million dollars there out of, out of the general fund and keep going the way we're going. Just my opinion.
If, if I can respond to that?
Yes.
Nearly all of these are inter-fund reallocations of line item, budget items. So those budgets, those funds, the police department parks are still living within their means for the most part. Most of these are all just line items. Again, we'll be from one line in that budget, earn that fund down to another one. As you know, there is still some, uh, budget adjustments being made for the windstorm and the Zeller culvert collapse. So those are being drawn from fund reserves. So those are being drawn from fund reserves. When you're talking a $10, $12 million budget with a ton of moving parts and weather playing a whole lot into our actual expenditures, this is not uncommon. We are living within our means. We do four adjustments a year, and we do the best we can in February, March, and April with the council's consent and approval to anticipate all the expenditures and revenues for the preceding or the following 12 months. Staff does a great job staying within their means, and Alyssa and Brooke do a great job of doing the appropriate handling. So again, bottom line is, this is a lot of inter-fund reallocation. Anything else to add?
I was just going to ask that.
May I? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I got to finish that. We have a motion in the second, so if you want to speak on this. No. Any further discussion on this matter? All right, roll call, please.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
Hillibrand?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Salter?
Yes. Resolution 2505 is approved. All right. Next up is public comment. Do you have any comments?
May I speak?
You have something you'd like to say?
Yes. Oh, was there somebody?
I think we can do this version.
Okay. Well, a couple of minutes ago, I don't know why nobody else spoke, but I didn't know how to frame the motion for the nominations. I personally don't want to pass the whole slate. I didn't know if it was my option to do a motion otherwise than that, but I don't think we should leave the meeting without doing, without voting on nominations tonight.
A motion. It's going to turn. I'm making a motion.
Can I make a motion now?
You can. You can make a motion. The mayor's asked that the appointments be presented as a slate. The council would have the option to make a motion to approve them individually. Right?
Yes. It's not required to be done as a slate or individually.
I'm still confused. We can make a motion to do them individually? We can. Okay. I move that we start voting one position at a time on the nominations, and have some discussion on each one if needed.
One position or one committee? One person by person? This one's a call.
Okay, I'll withdraw that. And I move that we go through the nominations voting, one committee at a time, but that within that committee, if there are multiple persons on there that somebody wants to discuss, that we can do it that way. I'll second your motion.
All right. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. No. All right. Motion is approved. So where would you like to start?
It's my choice. I just started at the beginning.
All right. Board, councils, or board? You brought that.
For a point of order, we're having a discussion. Hopefully Brenda agrees with us. You voted to go through on an individual basis, basically, as a process. So if you go to each, if you just do it the way it's laid out, if you go through each committee, there would need to be a separate motion and support to appoint those members as recommended or not. So you, Mr. Zimmer, your motion was basically the process. Now you'd have to go through each of those boards and discuss and motion in second for the appointments.
Motion in second, and then discuss.
For each one?
For each board, for each appointment.
So I guess if that needs another motion, then to get started, is that correct?
Correct. For example, you can make a motion that for the board of review, there's a motion to reappoint Greg Means to the board of review, and a second discussion, then a vote.
That's exactly what I would move, that we vote for the board of review to confirm the mayor's nomination for Greg Means.
All right. It's been moved in, supported. Here's any discussion. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. Okay, that is approved.
If I have to go on, I guess I move that we...
Well, you don't have to do them all either, Tom. Anybody can do each one of them, right?
Okay, well, I'll do this one.
Okay.
This pertains to the marina board.
Can you make one that you, that you can do?
That's not a conflict, is it? Yeah. You can make a motion for himself if he wants.
I move that my name be withdrawn from the marina board.
Does that mean a second? Yes. Second. All right. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I did not request to be put on the marina board in my application sheet. Aside from buying gas at a marina, I have never used a marina. I've never used a slip. I've never stayed overnight in a marina. I don't think I'm qualified to be on that particular board. I suggest, I know we have to vote on this, but I would suggest that we go back and give that seat, and I think it would take a mayor's nomination, I guess, give that seat to Ron Russell, who is somebody that did apply for that seat, that position. And I do believe that he's qualified. For myself, I'd like to, later in the process, request to be nominated to...
We're dealing with this one.
Well, okay.
Let's deal with this one. So, may I?
Yes.
Looking at the membership by resolution, we need one council member, one planning commission member. If you are not put on that, that leaves, leaves myself as either the planning commission person or the council member.
Could you serve as both?
Can I serve as both as a class of?
Yeah.
Probably not.
Yes.
But you only need four people. Oh, no.
You need seven. The mayor could serve as the planning commissioner, and Mr. Holmstrom, you can serve as the council that.
Steve resigned from the...
You're right.
Or planning commission. They're allowing me in the marine advisory. Right, yes. Otherwise, it wouldn't work, but...
True.
Well, we don't know who's on the planning commission yet, until we go on.
I'm on the planning commission.
Yeah, I know. Oh, okay, so you are taking...
I would cover, I could cover either one, so I mean...
Why not? I mean, it's, I mean, you're both, yeah, not, why not?
Because it states in the bylaws, it identifies each of the seven members. I don't know if that's a legal interpretation. That would be my interpretation.
Yeah, that's exactly how it would be.
So you do fill one of the spots as a council member, and that spot is what your spot would be?
Whereas there was another planning commission.
Unless with the other planning commission.
You would serve on the marina part.
Yep.
I'm going to suggest that, Tom, you really don't have to be anything to do with the marina, do you have the marina, or it's just whether you know how to...
I realize that, but I think the reason I was put there was so that there would be a good reason not to put me on a different board. That's my feeling.
I have to admit, I thought you had some good recommendations for the marina, so I thought it was a good fit, Tom.
I just talked with, I talked with somebody that has a vote there.
Yeah.
Been a long-term customer, and she basically came and spoke and...
But certainly, if you don't want to be on it, I just, I thought it was a good fit because of you bringing back those concerns, but...
We have somebody who signed up and wants to, I guess that's not the case because we need a councilman?
Unless they need to change that and be a planning manager. Maybe they could wait and draw your motion, or did we go down to the...
Not been a vote yet.
No. Just we had a motion to support.
I believe that that board could operate with one less individual. It's not imperative that it be filled at this point.
Can we have extra people? It's three, it's the three residents running the following, and one of them is the City of Whitehall, so would there be an issue with appointing Ron Russell?
There would be in the fact that with the mayor's resignation, we have to have a council member. Or if Mr. Holmstrom takes that as a council member, then we have to fill it with a planning commissioner.
I might remind you that we're at this situation as a result of the council's desire to limit the mayor to four boards or commissions.
Tell him that all council members are for...
Everybody, it's not just...
Not just yours.
Well, in my opinion, I don't see why we couldn't pick somebody from the planning commission.
We're not discussing the planning commission. We're discussing the marina. That's the motion on the table.
So let's take it up, to the planning commission first.
I will withdraw my motion to vote on the marina.
Mr. Brown, I believe we have to confer.
I'll second it.
Second.
I have a question.
Commission has been removed.
Yeah, the question is a general question. At the beginning of this, before we start the boards and commissions, the agenda report indicates council appointments and then mayoral appointments with council approval. So when you say council appointments, are you talking about those boards need a council person, or that is a board that's appointed by the council in general?
Correct. The latter. Council appointments are basically those made by the council.
Gotcha. Let's do this one first.
Okay, then I move that we go on to the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second.
To go on.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
For clarification, I don't think you need a motion to move on unless the motion was to approve the recommendations as presented.
Is that your motion?
My motion is to move on and preempt, and can't vote on the recommendations.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's recommendations. I mean, two people nominated for zoning board appeals.
I have to tell him I'm a second.
Yeah, it's a second.
Oh, you made that motion, you're the second.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll take the second motion as a second.
Do we need any discussion on that? For vote. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. That's approved. Confirm motion on one of the others. I'll make a motion to approve the mayoral appointments to the brown field.
Second.
It's been seconded. Is there any discussion on that?
Yes, I don't, if we have a council member that's interested in being on the board, then I don't think we should leave the vacancy that's recommended. And I would like to, I would like to ask if Debbie Hillibrand would like to fill that vacancy, if I could do that. I don't know. Probably just...
We're down here. We might, just to make Brenda's minutes look legible, we might want a discussion and a vote on a motion appointing those three, and then you can come back and discuss the vacancy. Would that be... Yep.
So did I make a motion before? If not, I would like to...
I think first we would discuss and vote on the motion to appoint Severn Empire and Ben Weir, and then come back with a motion on the vacancy.
Okay.
So do we have that motion in second?
Yes.
Yes. Do we have any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
Then I would go back and motion, and move that, I guess it would take a mayor's recommendation, a nomination, to put Debbie Hillibrand on that vacancy.
I have a second.
And what is the motion? What are on there?
We, I don't believe we can vote on her directly without re-making a nomination.
That's correct.
Is, do, when do we have discussion about this?
We have a motion in the second on the floor, so...
So we can talk about it right now?
Sure.
Okay. We need to have every council member on at least one board for commission W. Pardon? Yes, we do.
No, we don't.
It's not mandatory.
I know, but I'm not saying it have, I'm not saying it's mandatory. I said we really should have every single council member on one board or committee. I said that at numerous meetings when we discussed this. I think it shows that we can work together, that we value teamwork, and we value our council members' contributions. That's the point. This is an omission that has to be filled and redressed at this point. Debbie is qualified and...
She's a board member.
Yeah. Well, every effort, yeah. And I guess that's my opinion when I say we have to have somebody. We're a seven-member council. We've all been elected. We have constituencies that we speak with, different constituencies, which is good. I think it is a distinct omission and is a black mark on the city not to have every council member have the ability to contribute because they were elected as well in some fashion.
I agree with everything you said.
I think in this appointment policy, we should be following the rules of the procedure that we just established a couple of months ago. One of the rules in, one of the lines in... One of the rules in, one of the lines in this policy says every effort will be made to appoint each member of the council to an authority board, commission, or committee. That has not been done.
So I don't, I don't understand what the problem is here, why can't we get Debbie put on that board? Is this some kind of a threat against somebody or what's going on? This, because it's obviously up to the mayor right now to put Debbie on this board.
That is the mayor's prerogative.
Yeah, so I think you ought to have to explain yourself, the process here.
I'd, I'd like to hear an answer to that question.
It's not my prerogative to, it's not my choice to do that.
I would like your.
Then why are you the mayor?
You're not on the, you're not, you're not allowed to speak at this point.
Question stands.
This particular issue is what's driving the problems behind this.
I know, I realize.
Not following the rules that have been established by the council earlier in the year, her legislature.
Yes, I'll just, I'll just say to this point, as long as boards have interested and willing people, that, that makes me happy. I'm, I'm happy with that. Almost nobody comes to sit on these boards with a ton of experience. We're lucky to have some people that are interested in these boards that do. I don't have to sit on a board to be of service to our community. The fact that I am not recommended to sit on any boards despite I'm willing, I'm interested, I'm qualified, and I submitted my letter of interest demonstrates to me yet another display of the mayor's self-serving abuse of this position. He's not following the rules, he's not interested in what we're, what his fellow councilpeople are saying to him, he wants to do it his way. It shows to me also a lack of interest in working together for the good of the community. If everybody agreed with everything, we would need one councilperson, that's not the way it works. We are allowed to disagree, we need to do it respectfully and in the best interest of the community. So again, it's not important to me whether I sit on the boards. I, I'm, I'm willing and I'm interested, but if there are other people who are qualified, I am fine to have somebody get the experience so that they can carry on. This is a statement and it's not a positive one, it looks bad for the city and it looks bad for you personally.
Anyone else?
I'll agree with everything she said too.
We can move on to the next one.
There's technically a motion on the floor to recommend that the mayor appoint Debbie Hillebrand to Brownfield.
We have a motion, all those in favor of the motion? Say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed say no? No. All right.
The, the motion passed.
That's just a recommendation, yeah, that's just a recommendation to the mayor, it's not.
It's a recommendation.
Yep, it's not something that the, the council doesn't have the authority to make the nomination.
The local development finance authority, I make a motion? Let me just study here a second. I move that we vote to approve several of the mayor's nominations, those being Tom Moore, Aaron Pyer, CJ Van Weer, and Dan Reinsma-Sabanga. That we recommend that we nominate them, but not the other two listed.
I'll second that.
All right.
I move in second, is there any discussion?
The reason that I moved that way has to do with the other, the other two gentlemen that were on there that were nominated, Brett Saborin, I believe that's how it was pronounced, and John Booze. Brett is from, uh, Almet, he spoke.
Are we supposed to vote on the motion?
No, it's discussion time.
Oh, sorry, I'm getting confused, apologize.
Brett is a, is a, one of the senior managers at Almet, he's a very good guy, he's got a good career, he's got good credentials. John Booze, I don't really know if he's from Highlight. The reason why I don't think they should be on this one is because both of their businesses are in the industrial zone, which is covered by the local development finance authority. Something that I believe the city needs to start being cognizant of is having so many people on boards and committees with conflicts of interest. That's why I voted to leave those two off.
I have a question.
I guess, I guess I got a question, I guess, why, why do you think that those two people are in conflict of interest other than where they are working?
Because where, exactly because of where they're working.
Are they the decision makers of those, so if they wanted to obtain more land from the LDFA, are those the decision makers for that, to do that? I guess it's my question. The way I look at it is they're both, both, if that's indeed what they are, because I don't know either one of them, that's on, I'm, yeah, what you're saying about them. If that's, Highlight is within the LDFA, I do believe Almet is as well, but again, if they aren't the buck stop that make the decision about property, I don't, there are also two people that, that deal in business, which is what the LDFA is about. The LDFA is about land building, the finance, getting the property in the industrial park to be fruitful. And if they have contacts that could help that, make that fruitful, that would be a good thing as far as I'm concerned. If Almet has, or Highlight has a, a parent company or something else and they're looking for property and these guys know it's there, that might be a good thing versus a bad thing. That's, I'm just putting that out there.
And, and I don't know either of these gentlemen personally either. I, was the John Booze recently added on? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, yes, that's why I'm not up on that. In the case of Brett Saberin, he's not a resident of Whitehall, he's not a resident even of the White Lake area. He submitted his application past the deadline, and again, I think we should be following the rules for the appointment policy that we just passed. And again, I believe that, I'll leave it at that.
I have a question. It says, uh, seven members appointed by the mayor subject to council approval. One appointed by the county board commissioners, one by the CEO of the community college, two appointed by Whitehall school district, so that sounds like eleven. Is that how big this board is?
Who is the, the rep from the, appointed by the county board?
Kim Seer, and his term does not expire till next year.
Okay. All right, he's still on, so. So Jerry McDowell is appointed by who, by the?
By the school board.
Well, see then, why are we voting in, oh, he.
He resigned.
Why are we replacing him with CJ Van Weer and he's on the school board? Or he's on the school?
Um, the school appoints two members, they, they have.
They have appointed him?
They, the school have, has appointed CJ Van Weer.
So then why is he on our list?
Those, those four appointments are more of a confirmation than an appointment. Because the state statute requires those appointments be made by those boards. So you're confirming Mr. Van Weer, Mr. Moore, and Mr. Reinsma-Sabanga.
Okay, so they're not, they're not all just mayor recommendations?
Correct.
Oh, we know what's what.
Well, that's why it says school, school, and MCC afterwards.
So, okay, so Highlight appointed.
Well, no, Highlight was just.
So, so Tom Moore, so Tom Moore is one of the school ones, the other two schools are?
Well, Tom Moore and CJ Benwer represent Whitehall district schools.
Okay.
Kim Seer will continue to represent the county, and Dan Reinsma-Sabanga will be a new appointment from the Stevie Community College as Marty McDermott has retired from MCC. Same thing with Jerry McAl, he retired from the schools.
All right, so Booze Saberin and Pyer are the ones that.
Are.
Yes.
Yes. Mayoral appointments.
For a point of clarification, on Mr. Saberin, on Brett's application, the only position he requested was to be on the Brownfield authority. Did you notice I didn't ask to have his name taken off because that's what he requested? But also I don't see any possible conflict of interest there either. But I think on the LDFA and also TIFF, that's my feeling.
So we're ready for a vote, right? The two eliminated?
That would be correct.
So we're voting on Tom Moore, CJ Benwer, and Sabanga.
And Aaron Pyer.
Yeah, Aaron Pyer. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no?
No.
That leaves the other two.
So if there is no vote scheduled for that?
There is not.
So then I guess we move on to the motion on the zoning board of appeals.
Looking backwards.
So just a point, you're, you're leaving the two off. That board will operate with nine individuals instead of eleven.
Oh, by the way, there were other, there were other information sheets out there from people that requested to be on that board. But moving on to the local officers' compensation commission, I move that the mayor's recommendations, Debbie Elliott and Wendy Anderson, be approved.
Second. I move in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no? Approved.
On the planning commission, I move that we approve Dan Boyer, but not Kara Smith, to be on that board. Those were the mayor's recommendations.
Second. And move in second, is there any discussion?
I would like to, how, how would I, it's just certainly mayor recommendation, but I'm disappointed not to see Tamara Horn on here. And I don't, I can't come, I can't vote on the current slate because I think she's the best qualified candidate. She's been attending the meetings for years, she's collaborative, she's positive. She seemed, I thought she was on this, you know, last time, and now she's not, and so I, I'm not going to approve a slate without her being on it.
I'm, I'm looking at it as we received a, a seat from Kara Smith, but it came today, today. And the rules are they have to be in by what, mid-October?
January 1st.
January 1st, okay. So I'm gonna vote same way, or just the one person, unless we can get another person to have it.
That would be, just like we did last time, we'd have to add it, correct? How we, so we vote on, if I'm right, we vote on Dan for this position, and then you would have to make another motion like we did in the three, four, no, whatever.
But ultimately the mayor would have to make a new recommendation. Yeah. Sorry, did you hear me in the back? I said ultimately the mayor would have to make another recommendation, or the seat would be vacant.
To put Tamara back on the slate like she was last week.
That would be another vote.
That'd be another motion, right?
Yes.
So right now we're voting on Dan.
On Dan.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of Dan say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no?
So I would make that motion now, right?
What motion are you making?
I'd like to motion, I would like to add Tamara Horn to be recommended for the planning commission. She has already stated her qualifications, I actually worked with her in a different setting, and she's, she's excellent at her job. She has experience that I think is very useful to our city council. She shows up, she's in the front seat most every meeting, I think that shows interest. And I think this goes back to what I've said before, is I love to take people, I'm not interested in taking, you know, knocking people off committees. On the other hand, when we have a vacancy, I, I'd like to pull from people that, that are showing their interest in positive and constructive ways. So I, I would like to see her rise to that level of, of engagement with our, with our city council and with our community.
Did, did you move?
I moved.
I'll second.
I move in second, is there any discussion?
What did we, what was the motion? Sorry.
Or recommend that the mayor, recommend, well, a motion to support that the mayor recommend, Tamara Horn to the planning commission.
All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no? No?
I would like to make another motion on the same planning commission. I see no reason why, also, why we also couldn't consider Tom Zimer, Scott Brown, and Debbie Hillebrand for this same position. And I would like to make a motion that they also be considered by the mayor for this position on the planning commission.
Second. So we got to move in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Yes.
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 Opposed? No.
Wow.
All right, next?
Tech increment finance authority. I move that we approve two of the mayor's recommendations, that for Aaron Pyer and for CJ Van Weer. And that we leave Brett Saberin off for the same reasons stated before.
Second, we'll still be within the amount of people needed for the board, it's a seven to thirteen number, so we'll. number, so we'll be over there somewhere, right?
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I guess that was my discussion. Sorry.
I just want to point out that I have no idea who Erin Pyer is personally, and I have nothing against her. I just want to make it a point that this will make four boards that she's on, which there is nothing wrong with, is well within the rules, but you have, you know, other city council members and other qualified people within the city that are also interested, and to put one person on four boards and other people on no boards just doesn't make any sense. That's all I have.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, say yes.
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 Opposed, say no.
No.
All right. So those two are approved.
We were going to have a discussion about...
Oh, yeah, sorry. We never finished that one, did we?
Making Jeff the appointment to, as, making Jeff the representative as the city council member on Marina Board, and then potentially appointing a different planning commissioner to the Marina Board, and then making the recommendation for Ron Russell to fill the seat that then would be open. Is that...
No.
Okay. What were, what were we going to go back and do? Because we were going to...
We're going to have a planning commissioner.
Yeah. Because right now, the issue at Marina is we need one coun, we need a member of council and the mayor. So, no. Planning commissioner. Right. I said that wrong. So if Jeff becomes the council representative, all right, now you all have...
He can be either, but not both.
Right, but we had a discussion about a way to...
Yeah, we have to, if you put me on as the council person, you'd need to have somebody from that planning commission group...
Yes.
Right.
To take that other spot.
Ron Russell does not sit on council or planning, so he would...
Right, but I thought we were talking about that change so that we would have an extra vacancy. No.
You would to fill either from planning, the current planning commissioner, or the city council.
So somebody from planning.
So you get a choice of somebody up here...
Or somebody from planning.
...Dan Boyer, Ryan Armstrong, Laura Aberson, Rick Langstrom, John Dillon, Amy Church, or Steve Salt.
And this is something that comes from council. It doesn't have to be in the mayoral appointment, so we could... You still want to make a move?
Yeah.
So we need to weigh on the mayor making a recommendation to fill that position from somebody from planning, is that correct?
But we don't have to have a mayoral appointment for this board. For Marina. For the Marina Board, it's a council appointment. So we just have to agree, or the majority of us have to agree on a recommendation.
Planning, I'm just talking here, the planning board was one of the items that I put my name on for, that I was nominated for. The mayor nominated me to be on the planning board, and I would also serve on the Marina Board.
You can be in the Marina Board without the planning commissioner. As the, as the, as the council person.
As Jeff is, Jeff is...
Because I'll take the, I'll do the, I can flip either way, so I'll flip to the planning commission person, and Tom would be the, take the council spot.
I think the point is that Tom wants to be on planning.
I would like to be on TIPA for planning, for LDFA. I resent being snubbed for all those.
Join a club.
So Tom, you're no, even if I make a recommendation, put you on.
Unless it comes with one of the other positions.
What are the requirements of who, who all the different people are that have to be on the Marina Board?
That's a resolution that established the Marina Advisory Committee back in late eighties, early nineties. So it's by resolution.
There isn't any way to change that now?
By resolution, I don't know if it's in their bylaws as well, adopted, but the city council, since it was established by resolution, can change it by resolution. Membership may cut.
So if we, I'm just, just thinking out loud, if we changed it to not have to have a council member on it, then we could vote to put Ron Russell on, because Jeff would end up being the planning person.
That would be correct.
But the problem you run into is if you don't have a person that is both on planning and council, you end up with no council members on that.
You could take the planning off, and make a council person, and then...
You could, if you're going to delve into it, you can rearrange the seven membership anywhere you see fit. That will still be beneficial and in the best interest of the Marina. And, you know, the adjacent communities' involvement, from my read of the history, the establishment of the Marina was not well embraced in the White Lake community, and I think that was part of the negotiations or the discussions to bring in the whole White Lake area to support it, that there'd be representation outside of the city.
And I agree with you. I'm pretty sure that was for chemical settlement money, about $137,000, and people on the other side of the lake were kind of unhappy with that being used over here, so I probably wouldn't agree to removing that myself.
What was the, what was the reasoning behind requiring a planning commissioner be on the Marina Board?
I was still in college in that, I believe. I don't know the reasoning behind that. My guess would be just that the planning commission would have been very much involved in the actual development and site approval.
Because, I mean, if it makes sense, if that still makes good sense, then I wouldn't want to change it, but I, but I don't see today a reason, a strong reason that we couldn't amend that against...
Well, I guess my question is, Deb, I've sat on that committee for a long time, and I think you would be a great fit on that committee, because we discussed how to make the Marina viable and items like that, and I think that would fit into Wheelhouse very well.
You're still missing Tom's point.
This is going to look, this is going to look great if the press catches this. The mayor has publicly insulted four, five people here, four people here, three council people in our most consistent audience member.
Can we get back to the agenda, please?
Yeah, if I make that recommendation, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Well, I mean, I would, I would like to try, I would rather try to find a way to get Ron, he's far more qualified than I am, I mean, I guess I could bring him on with me and he could help me.
Really, it's not, it's not that difficult.
And not to kick the can down the road, but all Marina appointments will become due in 2025, so then you can...
What does that mean?
When?
Well, this time next year, because in 2025, while they expire at the end of 2025. So all of those appointments, and not to, you know, nothing against Mr. Russell, I know him, and I think he would be a good fit, but you would have a lot more flexibility with all seven members and fitting the people that have shown continued interest, because maybe some of the seven members currently have decided they no longer want to serve.
I have a question. What, are these all of our boards?
These are all of the boards and commissions and authorities and committees that have vacancies.
So there are some, well...
Marina, like I said, all of the appointments for Marina don't expire till 2025, other than that the mayor is stepping down from Marina.
Library is...
Correct.
Nobody's done that.
Correct. Fire authority, I don't think there are expiration dates on those. Am I missing any, Brenda?
Library?
Yeah, we just mentioned library. Library, fire, Marina technically doesn't have openings at this point, most of these, most of them do.
I thought I remember seeing some of these boards where people were appointed by the council and then, and then voted on by the old council or something like that. I don't know. Was I wrong about that?
No, there are some, in fact...
Marina that we're talking about is one.
Marina is a council appointment, so any member of the council can make a motion with the support to appoint anybody who fits into one of those blocks. Right now, that block is either a council member or a planning commissioner.
So with that being said, I'm going to make a motion that we put Deb Hillbrand on the Marina Advisory Commission for the year.
I'll second that. But she has to say yes.
She even stink eyes.
More than once, yes.
All right. It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no? No? Motion is approved. Welcome. I believe that takes care of the appointments.
I have a question. Obviously, the way these appointments are set up has all been set up by the council originally anyway, so if we want to change, who makes appointments for these councils, the council can put forth a resolution that changes, is that correct?
Not all of them.
Change the city charter.
Some are by charter, some are by state law.
I don't know which, which.
It says it in which category. It will say, a charter, membership by resolution, by state law.
In that appointment policy.
Anything else? Right, at this point, it's time for the students to step up and give us their name. Want to give credit for this meeting, they need to... Any students? Yes. Last public comment. Anyone have anything they want to say?